Good evening, I call to order this April 1st meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and ask the City Secretary to call the roll please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bessie.
Here.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Proton Burt.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Thank you, would you please join the City Council me in a moment of silence? Thank you, would you join the City Council me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Sergeant at Arms tonight is Lieutenant Dent Rego, Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. Tonight's agenda of the City Council is comprised of following items, there are five rezoning petitions, the zoning petitions are listed at public hearings and when these hearings are called persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak, if there is opposition to these rezoning petitions, the proponents and the opponents will be given 15 minutes each for presentation and then three minutes each for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing and the City Council will consider the item. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13 and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Of course copies of our agenda as well as videos of previous meetings are always available online at the city's website and just click on the watch meetings online option. May we have item Z1 please?
Item Z1, public hearing on zoning petition of Zachary Rothrock and Glenda Rothrock from PBS to RS9. Property is located on the southwest corner of Styris Ferry Road and Laura Road located in the west ward. Planning Board recommends approval petition.
Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and I'll recognize Councilmember Clark.
If we could just have a one minute presentation please, Mr. King.
Sure. There you can see the subject property in yellow, it's a little over an acre in size and this is catty corner from the LA rentals rezoning, this GBS just across Styris Ferry Road that council considered less than a year ago. Again, it's PBS zoning now, this will take it back to RS9 and be consistent with the balance of the neighborhood that surrounds it. There you see the subject property with the two structures currently on it. The area plans recommendation for the property in red there is commercial. There are the actual two structures there from Laura Road and this is from Styris Ferry looking back at the two structures. And across Styris Ferry Road, so as I mentioned to you, it's at the entrance to that neighborhood, you've got a single-family home and a former office building on the site, it's less intense, it's for less, request is for a less intense single-family residential district and the majority of that property is boarded by RS9 zoning. This went to planning board their March meeting, there was no opposition present and the planning board voted unanimously recommend approval.
Any questions, Mr. King? Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Clark?
Yeah, this is right across street from, do you have a map you can show where the LA rentals property is? Where we're gonna be putting up? Yeah.
So there's the LA, the GBS is the LA rentals property.
That's gonna be a combination of restaurants, shops and apartments there. Anyway, this is actually down zoning, we're going back from business back to residential. Therefore, I will move for approval of 1, the statement of consistency for approval of this item and 2, W-3398.
Second.
Motion second, need a discussion? If not, those in favor of this motion please indicate by voting yes, anyone opposed vote no. That's unanimous, thank you, Mr. Clark. Item Z2?
Item Z2, public hearing on zoning petition of Gary Smith and Carol Smith from AG to RS20. Property is located on the south side of Glen High Road across from Country View Drive, located in the east ward. Planning Board recommends approval petition.
Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and I'll recognize Councilmember Cipio.
Mayor and fellow council members, this is a wonderful rezoning, it's because of a highway coming through this area and so we're, the owners are trying to get this zone from agriculture, which the east ward is so diverse, we have real farm land. And so at this point, I move for approval of 1, the statement of consistency for approval of this item and 2, W-3399.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Need a discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion please indicate by voting yes, anyone opposed vote no. And that is unanimous, thank you, Councilwoman Cipio. Item Z3?
Item Z3, public hearing on zoning petition of Crystal Corporation and Crystal Company LLC from HB and RSQ to GBL. Property is located on the southwest corner of Peters Creek Parkway and Academy Street located in the southwest ward. Planning Board recommends approval petition.
Again, is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? All right, seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and I recognize Councilwoman Bessie.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, this is essentially a redo of a rezoning that was approved for this property awhile ago in order to facilitate redevelopment of this site for good affordable housing. Mr. King, would you please explain the technical reason why we're back in with this again?
Mr. King?
Yes, I'd be glad to. As you can see, this is the location map for the subject property and you can see the current zoning is highly business for the majority of the site and there's a portion of it that's on RSQ, that's residential, single-family, quadruplex. This was rezoned to general business limited use last year by City Council and we had a condition, a reversion clause in there that basically stated that if the property did not transfer ownership by date in September, the zoning reverted back to its original zoning, which is HB and RSQ. So given that the zoning did revert back because that condition was not fulfilled, that's why the applicant is coming back through basically with the same exact request that council considered before.
And it's just, does not have the reversion clause?
Correct.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor, with that explanation, I move for approval of 1, the statement of consistency for approval of this item and 2, W-3400.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion? Now, all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes, anyone opposed vote no. That's unanimous, thank you, Mr. Bessie. Item Z4?
Item Z4, public hearing on zoning petition of Forsyth County from IP to GBS. Property is located on the northwest side of Sturmer Park Circle, north of Chatelon Drive. Property is located in northeast ward. Planning Board recommends approval petition.
Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and I'll recognize Mayor Proton Burt.
Yes, I would like to.
Okay, Mr. King, please.
I'll start with Legacy's Growth Management Plan. And you can see this, very good. There's the location map with the subject property shown in yellow, it's on Sturmer Park Circle just north of Chatelon Drive, west of University Parkway and it's currently zoned IP, this is the old Springwood facility. And the request is for general business, special use for group care facility C. You can see the area plan map, which recommends institutional for the site. There's a aerial image that shows the existing building that's currently on the site. Quick picture of the existing building that's in question, the existing building would be to the left there, the animal control building is to the right and that's looking back towards Chatelon Drive from the subject property. This is the site plan and this site plan is basically an as-built of what's on the property, there are really no changes proposed to what's there. It's historic, the site's been historically used for institutional uses, it's basically IP zoning with the use of group care facility C added. It's surrounded by IP zoning and it has access to transit. This did go to planning board their March meeting, there was no opposition present and the board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this request.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, I'm very in opposition. I move for approval of 1, the statement of consistency for approval of this item and 2, W-3403.
Second, motion second. Need a discussion? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by voting yes, anyone opposed vote no. That is unanimous, thank you, Mayor Proton. Item Z5?
Item Z5, public hearing on zoning petition of Henry Heitman Jr., Carol Powell and Gilbert Frank from RS9 to RM18S. Property is located on the southwest corner of Renolda Road and Briar Cliff Road located in the northwest ward. Planning Board recommends approval petition.
We will have a public hearing on this one, the proponents will have 15 minutes. First person signed up is Charlie Heritage. If you would, please give your name and address for the record.
Okay. Charlie Heritage, 7204 West Friendly Avenue, Greensboro, North Carolina. Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, thank you all for having us here tonight. The property is located at the corner of Renolda Road and Briar Cliff Road. As part of our rezoning petition, back in February, we notified the neighbors of a neighborhood meeting that was going to be held on February 25th. At that time, there were 30 to 40 neighbors that showed up. This same, a similar site plan was introduced a few years ago and so I think, you know, the neighbor saw this again and had some concerns that they brought up to me during that meeting, which I'll go over in a minute. And then, they brought those concerns up and then, two weeks later, we invited them to another neighborhood meeting and this time, there were approximately 20 to 25 neighbors that showed up during the meeting. We felt like after the second meeting, we did a pretty good job of alleviating their concerns and so I would like to, I've got a picture on here, oops. So the original, the original site plan, let's see how to pull this in, just double-click on it, okay. Oh, there we go. So the original site plan, right off of Briar Cliff Road, we were gonna have a sidewalk and then 10 feet in, so like 10 feet from the road into the property, there was gonna be about a 20-foot retaining wall. And then on top of that 20-foot retaining wall, maybe about 10, 15 paces back, there was gonna be a two-story building. And one of the neighbors', you know, major concerns the first night was, you know, we don't want to be driving down this road and seeing this huge wall. So we took that into consideration and knowing that we needed to keep the same amount of units, I couldn't shrink the number of units to make the project feasible. So instead, we, we made the building smaller, we basically took off a whole wing of the building and just added a third floor. And what that did was, that completely eliminated the retaining wall. So now, you're looking at a building 40 to 60 feet away from the road, where it was gonna be 20 feet on the road and you're gonna look at this big, you know, I mean this, I don't know how tall this is, but it's probably, it's probably 30 feet in here, maybe 25, so you know, you're gonna look at this massive wall and then see a building behind that. And so, with that taken into consideration, like I said, we shrunk the building's footprint and then added a third floor to keep the number of units, totally eliminated the retaining wall. And then, we've got a good number of trees in here, really all around the site and I'll just kinda go through some of these. One of the other main issues, is there, where's my clock at? Or do we have a clock?
We'll let you know.
Okay, perfect, I just, okay. Can you let me know when there's about five minutes left?
You've got about 11 minutes.
Okay, perfect. So one of the other major concerns was access to Briar Cliff Road from our development. Now, this is a 55 and older senior development and so, it wouldn't see the traffic that a, you know, a commercial business would have, a apartment complex would have, that sort of thing, so that wasn't restricted to 55 and older. But however, one of the, one of the concerns was traffic onto Briar Cliff and so we met with planning staff, we met with the first responders and they have allowed us to, I don't know if this thing will show up on here or not, oh, sorry. So where this little yellow car's at, I didn't tell this lady that drew this, but the yellow car should not be there because that will not be an entrance anymore. So there will be no access onto Briar Cliff. And I think at the second meeting, when we announced that, I could feel a kind of a, you know, sigh of relief from the crowd that there was not gonna be traffic and only emergency access only. So there will be a gate there with a Knox box that first responders can go in into. So that was one of the changes. Another one was, if you look at this picture, our, I don't know if you can, can y'all see my mouse when I do this? Okay, so right there where the, where the mouse is, that's where the, that's where the trash bins will be and we'll have a, we'll have a brick wall enclosing that screening as well as plannings around it, but it was at the end of this parking lot, so kind of in this green area. And so when you turned onto Briar Cliff, you know, one of the comments was, well, we don't want to be looking at a, I'm sorry, we don't be looking at a trash can dumpster, you know, right when we pull in, even if it is screened. So we were able to move that, shift that around and I think maybe some of these other, we'll show this, can't get this thing to move. I'll just bring up another picture. So that is, that is the front of the building looking on from Renolda Road, again, as you can see, there's a pretty substantial landscape buffer in the front and then, I wanted to show the landscape buffer in the back as well. And so, you know, the planning's along there. So we moved the dumpster, we eliminated the drive onto Briar Cliff, we eliminated the large retaining wall. One of the other major concerns that the neighbors had was water runoff from their, from this site. They're currently experiencing, if you know anything about this area, there's a pond maybe quarter of a mile from this site, let's just say it's southeast from the site and the, you know, the land kinda flows down, the water flows down in that direction. One of their main concerns was water runoff. They're experiencing some issues now with a development that is currently in progress and, you know, we've had historic rains in North Carolina and, you know, in order to get a building permit, we have to get an erosion control permit and so, but anyway, so with all that said, you know, their question was, well, yeah, this guy got an erosion control permit, what's gonna make you different than this developer who's doing the right things? You know, in his defense, I mean, he's got it designed to the, to the regulations and so we proposed, and I'll have the, just see the others, conditions? Yeah, is this the time where I could speak about conditions on those? Okay. So we proposed a couple of conditions with the, how am I doing on my time?
Seven minutes.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Okay. Perfect. So, you know, there's two issues that are going on with the current site out there. Oh, by the way, if y'all have any technical questions, Gene Mustin with Borm Wade Associates out of Greensboro is here so he could answer those, but a couple of the conditions that we agreed to put on this was, you know, the current site has, or the current neighborhood with the, with the new site being built, has an issue during construction and then there's post-construction. So there's during construction runoff, which is where you see red mud sometimes and then there's post-construction runoff, which you see just normal runoff, but so how do you control that? So with that in mind, we have agreed to increase the volume of our temporary erosion control methods. So we've got a, the basin will contain no less than a 2,000 cubic foot per acre of disturbed area. So that's above and beyond the normal requirements for a site the size of ours. And then the second thing was, you know, after, after construction, so how do we take all that stormwater? We've got more impervious surfaces on a three-acre site than we did before, we've got the same amount of volume, even more so because we do have impervious surfaces, so how do we, how do we take care of that? And so we have agreed also to, to design and install post-construction stormwater management at the 50-year storm instead of the 25-year storm and the increase in volume for the 50-year event shall be stored in an approved device and released every two-to-five day period. So essentially, we're taking all this rainwater, we're collecting it underground and then we're gonna disperse it in a two-to-five day period versus now what's happening out there on this site, which has got a few houses on it, that is, that runoff is just going, you know, going down, there's no control over it. So I think, if there's any questions, I guess I'll come up here later and answer those and I am done now. Thank you.
Gina and Steve Jarrett signed up?
Hi, Gina Jarrett, it's just me speaking, not my husband. 4164 Greenmead Road, Winston-Salem, North Carolina. Just imagine for a moment that this future scenario, you're a resident of Town and Country or some other neighborhood similar to that neighborhood. You're retired, your significant other has passed, for whatever reason, living with kids isn't an option. You might not want to continue to maintain and live in your 2,000 square foot house. You have a little money, receiving social security and maybe a small pension if you're lucky, but probably not enough to buy a condo or build a second home. You aren't poor enough for welfare programs and you have no health problems serious enough to live in an assisted living nursing home. You don't want to live at just any old apartment complex, they probably want too much for rent and there are probably too many young people. You're looking for a place that's geared towards your age group and your standard of living, although in a much smaller place. Somewhere where you can live your life and not have to worry about yard work or plumbing or noisy neighbors. Retirement communities such as Arbor Acres have a wait list a mile long. Sometimes those on the wait list pass away before they get their housing and I personally know someone that happened to. I researched this a little bit and I know that some folks who could, there are some folks who could very well find themselves in need of something like this proposed development someday. There's a definite need for senior 55 and older housing for those on a fixed income who don't want to stay in their four-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath home. Low income doesn't necessarily mean no income, there's a gray area so to speak between poverty and middle class. This is a growing niche of people who need this type of housing. I think the property at the corner of Brook Cliff and Renolda is a perfect fit for this kind of development. A place like Renolda Landing tends to be, needs to be somewhere close to shopping, banks, medical, medical offices, the library, restaurants. It needs to be near an established neighborhood like ours, like what the prospective tenants are used to, like where they used to live. The residents of Renolda Landing are adults, older adults, they won't be partying or trying to sneak into the pool or breaking into other people's properties, many don't even drive. This development keeps the property in some form of residential zoning instead of commercial. The developers have gone above and beyond what the ordinances require them to do as far as stormwater damage and soil erosion. They've picked landscaping that will grow quickly and will look nice. They have a plan in place for during construction as well as after construction and beyond to prevent damage to the surrounding properties. I realize that some of us in the neighborhood are reluctant to trust again after what we've been through, but I believe these people have shown professionalism and spirit of goodwill. They've been very accessible and forthcoming with their plans, they've listened to what we had to say and incorporated that information into the revised plan as you saw. Unlike a lot of builders and developers, they want to be good neighbors. I would ask the council to review this plan so that we residents of Town and Country Estates won't have to keep showing up at meeting after meeting to decide the fate of a piece of property that is already an eyesore in our neighborhood. This development can only be an improvement.
Thank you, Ms. Jarrett.
Alan Joy, Charlene Richards, at 12, 1209 North East Clear. I got the wrong date, the lady just told me that I have the wrong date, you can publish people, but I'm coming back here to see you. The day I came, came from Cleveland Avenue, 24th Street, 23rd Street. And we have a backlog that we want to, you have been our, one of our sponsors in the past, Alan Joy, and we want to make change in this neighborhood because Wake Forest and here are taking over our neighborhood and we want to stop Wake Forest and you know, to stopping, stopping the low-income communities because you've got a lot of people, a lot of people ain't gonna have no place to stay in the low-income. So we gave you a little backlog that you can look over, we want to create, we're gonna stop our children from going to jail and put the work, so we want you to just look at it.
Ms. Richards, thank you, this, this item is a little bit different from that, but we'll review that.
Yeah, that's what she told me.
Thank you for coming, Ms. Richards. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard for the proponents? All right, we'll now move to those in opposition to this rezoning, first person signed up was Chelsea Smith, Chelsea Smith?
Hello, I'm Chelsea Smith and I live at 4231 Weathero Road, which is in Town and Country Estates. I've lived there for over 20 years and I'm now a homeowner in the area because I grew up in the neighborhood as well. I have a few concerns about what they're trying to do. First of all is the flooding of the homes on Lock and Briar Cliff as they mentioned. What you can't see from those renderings is the fact that those streets are very, our neighborhood is kinda like a fishbowl and there is a pond in the middle of it and so everything always goes down toward this area, which they had to redo a few years ago because the dam was broken. Also, the streets on Briar Cliff and Lock are currently being flooded, especially too at the end of our neighborhood on Mills Creek. And so we really can't take any more water in the area. And with the increase of impervious surfaces, as they were saying, I know their renderings had something like 59 parking spots in the area. Even if you release the water just a couple of days at the time, currently, I don't believe the area could take that. I mean, it's so steep that I've heard everyone, even now, they're doing a construction thing that everyone's basements are getting flooded in the area and you have red mud and everything else all in your basements. Another thing is, we have a lot of younger families coming into the neighborhood, we do have older families as well, I mean, I've lived there for over 20 years, I know most of my neighbors. But we do have younger children and we have a lot of school buses and kids playing in the neighborhood and I don't think it would be appropriate to increase the traffic through the area. I know they said that it's only for emergency vehicles that are going through Brook Cliff, but being a local in that area, people cut through the neighborhood all the time for a shortcut. So even though you think, oh, it's not increased traffic, plus people, if you're 55 and older, I mean, my parents are in their 50s and I was talking to them and they're like, we're gonna drive, like, it's not like, it's not a senior citizen necessarily like a nursing home. It is for 55 and older, people who are 55 have cars. Also, I think the biggest thing for me is just living in the area myself. I can understand where the people want to sell their property and make the money on the property and a developer wants to come in and make money and I get all that, but since I live there every day and take Briar Cliff to work every single day, I feel that it's gonna negatively affect my life, my quality of life and it's gonna bring a lower value to the homes in the area. I have no problem with elder or older living communities, I mean, if you look on the street right now, we have Brighton Gardens, we have like three or four older areas that people can live as of right now. I just don't think right on the edge of a residential neighborhood is the best place to put this. I'm not against the project as a whole, I just do not think that it's appropriate to put it in a residential neighborhood. Also, a three-story building, right now, there's no three-story buildings on that entire side of the road from Yakerville past Polo Road. I just don't think it's appropriate in somewhere that's a one-story, we have one-story, maybe two-story, family homes within the neighborhood and the neighborhood consists of over 400 homes. Again, that's my biggest thing, given the area, I just don't think it's appropriate and I do think, since it's lower income, since I read the proponent, what it says is lower income housing for older individuals, which I'm not against at all, I just don't think it's appropriate in the area and it will bring down the value of housing. That's my biggest concerns as of right now, is a homeowner in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person signed up is Stephanie and I'm sorry, I cannot make up the last name, so...
Hi, I'm Stephanie Ingram and I also live in the neighborhood and have lived there over 20 years. over 20 years. And I'm a little confused on the number of actual units because, just like Chelsea had said, the parking lot was going to be for 54 cars. And when you consider staff that are going to work there, and then I didn't know how many units there were going to be, that was kind of confusing to me. The flooding in Town and Country is ridiculous. My basement has flooded twice. And when I say flooded, I mean pulling out the rugs and throwing it away and pulling off the plywood, not the plywood, the paneling, and having to throw it away and have it redone. And I think any construction that is going to add more flooding, we've had flooding off ransom road construction, we've had flooding right now off of Briar Cliff, and we are going to talk about the 50-year flood, I think we need to be talking about 150-year floods because 50-year floods are going to be happening more and more and more. I happen to believe in science, and the data backs me up. And when I look at these pictures, and there's like, you know, of course, there's no, the gutters and the sewer things are left out of the pretty pictures, but that water, it has to go somewhere, and it's not going to stay up. It is going to come down. And if you live beyond Briar Cliff, you are considered down. And we have a easement where the power lines, all that water floods down, and releasing it in a three-day period, I just don't buy it. Like, other developers have come in, and they're like, oh, yeah, we'll take care of it. And it's not been taken care of. I mean, there's, I can't think of the name of the road right now, but a small road beyond the new, the latest development, and there's like a string of five or six houses, and the road is covered in red clay mud. And after it rains, I mean, their driveways are covered. It's a huge mess. We live in a bowl, and there's no getting around that that water's going to come down. I'm glad that he said that the driveway was going to go out onto Reynolda Road, but to me, that seems like a problem because turning a left off of Briar Cliff is like, you know, it's like a death move, like you're Evel Knievel if you're going to try that at, you know, at seven in the morning. So 55, I mean, I'm just going to go out on a limb here, most of you guys are 55, and you're going somewhere on a Monday morning, most of you, and turning a left out of that road, and there's 54 people there, that doesn't seem like a good idea either. It seems like there'd have to be some kind of, I don't know, traffic control. You can only take a right out of that parking lot. So I don't know how many units, and when you say 55 and over, again, I don't know if they're one- and two-bedroom, you know, apartments, or are you going to squeeze like six people into those apartments, and now you have four cars in the apartment, and now you have to have a bigger parking lot? Like, it just seems like some of that's not so buttoned up and tightened down. And I definitely have flooding concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard in opposition?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Larry Sutherland. I'm a resident at 3801 Tangle Lane. I've lived in that subdivision for almost all my life since the '60s, when the subdivision was first created. My wife and I currently live at 3801. My biggest concern, having lived almost all my life in that subdivision, is the impact and the negative impact that adding such a development will have upon traffic. I have watched traffic become worse and worse, especially at the intersection of Briar Cliff and Reynolda Road. If the council members know that area, there is a stoplight at Reynolda and Old Town. You can't ameliorate the problem of adding maybe 30, 40, 50 additional cars, especially after you've just added Reynolda Village to that mix, that you create a bottleneck at the entrance and the primary entrance and exit to that subdivision. And I would propose that as a precondition, if you will, a conditio sine qua non for any approval, that a study be conducted at the project developer's expense that will, by an independent firm not controlled by them, that will determine what the effects, the most probable effects upon traffic and possibly flooding that this proposal will have. And I second the concerns that others have. We are in a bowl when it's all said and done, and flooding is a concern as is runoff. But the biggest concern I have is the impact this will have upon egress and ingress to the subdivision. And having the entrance or exit to this new project onto Briar Cliff actually may be worse than everything than any other option because that's where the bottleneck exists. And that's, I hope that the council will take that into consideration. Oh, for what it's worth, also, there is a listserv for our Town and Country Estates, which I participate in. Not one single person I've seen on that list has actually been in favor of this proposal. And I may be mistaken, but I keep up with it daily. And everyone I've seen has been against the proposal, if that factors. And you can check that yourself if you want to go to the listserv. But it's been a big concern.
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland. Anyone else in opposition? Yes?
My name is Paula. I have lived in Town and Country for 22 years. We were told that this was going to be a structure of 48 units. 55 and older would be the requirement unless there is a handicapped person that would be allowed under that age. We were also told that most of these people would be elderly and have one car. If you are 55 and have a partner or companion, you both have a car. There will be, I think, 55 slots for cars. I think that's correct. There will be one and two-bedroom units. I asked the question, what is the maximum number of people allowed in a two-bedroom? The answer was five. That doesn't compute very well for a 48-unit structure and 55 car slots. The other concern is, again, the water. We were told above and beyond the water would runoff, be prepared for, two or three days would be a runoff. There's still a runoff to be let out in two or three days. It still runs down Briar Cliff. We were told Briar Cliff to lock. So those people on the corner of Lock are really going to get it in two or three days. The development that is now in process, Briar Cliff Village, as you were told, that runoff is flooding the people behind them. They were told that the water would be controlled. It has not been. So pardon us if we do not believe that this is going to be controlled, the traffic or the water or the number of people. We were also told that people that are 55 won't be partying. If you're 55 and not partying, I question that. Appreciate the time for your listening, and I hope you will listen to our concerns in our neighborhood.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in opposition? Yes, sir. Take your name, address for the record, please.
Charles Dixon, 3136 Shannon Drive, Town and Country Estates. I'll just be very brief. My wife and I moved into the neighborhood about three years ago. We took a place that needed a lot of work on it. We invested a lot of time, money, and energy into it to make it better than it was. And we went to Town and Country because of the charm of the development there. It's a very charming neighborhood, and as a couple of people said, there's over 400 homes in that neighborhood. Briar Cliff is problematic. Getting out on Reynolda Road in the morning, if you don't have to go to work, I guess that's not an issue. But if you do, there's school buses that go in and out of that neighborhood a lot, and getting on Reynolda Road is a real problem. Putting another development adjacent to the one that's currently being on-site right now is a major concern. And there's nothing you can do about the traffic because the traffic light is too close, if you would put it right there at Briar Cliff, too close to the other one. You'd be stopped, people'd be backing up all the way down Reynolda Road. Anyway, the major concerns are the infrastructure is not there to take and handle an additional development of that size and proportion. The current one we had, we proposed many different things from the developer, and none of those came to fruition. And as a result, what was a charming lake at one point now is full of silt and orange. And sometimes even the birds don't want to land on it. And I just think that this proposal is going to be an overdevelopment of our neighborhood, a taxing on the infrastructure that's currently available, and a bad proposal all in all. It'll detract from the integrity of our neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Thank you.
Thank you.
The proponents would have three minutes for rebuttal.
Really, the only one thing I want to talk about was the parking number of spaces, also the number of people in a bedroom. You know, when we talk about the number of people in a bedroom, we start getting into fair housing laws. And while the allowable maximum for a two-bedroom unit would be five, two per bedroom plus one, my management company, who was actually at the second neighborhood meeting, I had a, the president of our management company, Partnership Property Management, who's from Greensboro, they manage 10,000 units in the southeast, and several of those developments are 55 and older. He basically said during that meeting to the neighbors that were in attendance, that does not happen. I've got 10,000 units, and we don't have any senior developments where we have five, the maximum people, five people living in it. For a one-bedroom, it would be three, two people in a bedroom and then an extra. He says it just does not happen. And so history and prior experience would tell us that, that while you could, you know, do the math and say 48 units times five is almost 250 people, that's just, it's not going to happen. The average age of the tenants at my management company's 55 and older communities is 69. A lot of them are single widows, male and female. And, you know, as far as partying goes, I think it's understood that, you know, I mean, my parents are, just turned 70, and I threw my mom a great 70th birthday party. So older folks like to party. But I think that the point that I was trying to make at that neighborhood meeting, or not even me, but my management company was trying to make was, you know, a party with 70-year-olds looks a little bit different than a party with 20-year-olds. So, you know, we want to be good neighbors. We think this site lends itself to this development. Right across the street is another three-story development directly out our front door. We feel like it's a great transition from single-family to the commercial district, which is right down the road. I've got 10 seconds left, and I will say that traffic study, the number of trips coming out of that is about 380 a day versus about 2,000 if it was a commercial property.
Thank you, Ms. Heritage. The opposition would have three minutes for rebuttal. Anyone for the opposition? Yes, sir?
I'm Hoyt Beard. I live on 4251 Weather Row Road. I have a couple of questions that I think would be interesting to everyone. First of all, has there been any, is there any public money or involved that would be the incentive for the reason that they are limiting the age of the occupants of this property? And that it may be influencing what they're doing. The other thing is, I know Reynolda Road is on an angle. It's not truly north. But I believe that this is not the property that we're talking about. We're talking about southwest corner. It's the northwest corner. It's not identified correctly.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Anyone else for the opposition? Yes, sir?
One last point. Even if we assume that there are only three residents in the apartments, just on average or something of that nature, that's still 150 individuals, many of whom have cars, most of whom probably have children and grandchildren who'll be staying there part of time and aren't as familiar with the area. So it is not unreasonable to suspect that unless we have some sort of study that says these will be the effects, we don't know what the impact will be on the traffic. In addition, we won't know what the traffic situation will be like when Reynolda Village is finished. So until that's done, I think it's imprudent to approve another project until we know how much impact we're going to be receiving from the current project that's being developed.
Thank you, sir. The opposition would have about another minute for rebuttal. Seeing no one else, I will declare the public hearing closed and ask Ms. King to give the report of the planning board, please.
All right. We'll start with Legacy's growth management plan. It's in Growth Management Area 3 Suburban Neighborhoods. And you can see the subject property identified in yellow on this location map. It's about three acres in size. At the corner of Briar Cliff Road and Reynolda Road, we know the site. We know there's two existing dwellings there. A variety of zoning in the area, RM18S, that will be directly to the west of this site. Across the street, a multi, senior living facility that was referenced earlier, and a bank, branch bank there, Zone GO, which is general office. A little bit further to the east, you've got some limited office special use zoning and another Town and Country neighborhood, which is on RS9. Here's an aerial image showing the subject property outlined and the surrounding development And this is an image from the West Suburban Area Plan update, which identifies this area as recommended land use for low-intensity commercial or office use. This area there shown in kind of that pinkish color there. A few images, this is taken from an older road looking into the subject property. You can see our zoning sign there in the background. This is on Brook Cliff Road. The subject property would be to the right in the subdivision that's currently under construction. You can see there to the left in the background. This is kind of from the similar vantage point. This is on Brook Cliff Road, looking back towards Reynolda, and the subject property would be to the left in this image. This is a little bit further back on Brook Cliff Road. This is in the neighborhood a little further. You can see kind of the extent of the zoning, of the subject property there with our zoning sign. Further up, Brook Cliff would be Reynolda Road, but the subject property is to the left in this image. This is the site plan that was submitted with this request. So we'll kind of walk through this to get oriented. So Reynolda Road would be in this area, if you can follow that mouse cursor. Brook Cliff Road would be on the southern edge of this. One access point for this development is located here at the far western corner of the subject property. You've got the parking area that's located in front of the building there. Landscaping provided in front of the parking, that's actually where a street yard is required the developer has agreed to do, some additional landscaping to hide that parking there. As we kind of come around Reynolda Road... As we kind of come around Renolda Road towards the Briar Cliff intersection, I'll talk about a couple transportation-related issues there. One is, as we studied this intersection of Renolda Road and Briar Cliff Road, there were no improvements requested there, and that's because there's no access out onto Briar Cliff Road for the public. That is an emergency-only access. A second thing I'll just point out as we start talking about access for this site is that while you do have one full access point here at the far western corner, there have been multiple attempts to try to look at finding a second access point onto Renolda Road. That was very problematic because you get too close to that intersection with Briar Cliff, and then you have conflicts with those driveways across the street. That's why you don't see a second access point onto Renolda. As you come around onto Briar Cliff, I do want to make this point because there may be some confusion on that. There is a gate shown on this site plan, and the developer would be held to installing that gate, and that gate would only be for fire department access only through a knock box. The public, the folks that, the patrons of the site and the folks that live there would not be able to access Briar Cliff Road from that driveway. That is for emergency vehicles only. So, I do want to make that point clear as we're talking about this. As we do come back along Briar Cliff Road, there would be sidewalk and curb and gutter installed. There would be a type-two buffer yard that would be installed along the edge of Briar Cliff Road there. That is not an ordinance requirement, but it is a measure that the developers have agreed to, to try to help with the aesthetics of this, of the, offset the height differential of that building along Briar Cliff Road. And then as you move further along here, you can see this is a bank here. There would be some additional plantings, not so much a buffer yard, but additional plantings that will be placed there to kind of soften that appearance from Briar Cliff Road. And as you get to the west side of the building, stormwater, as was mentioned earlier, would be handled in an underground facility, so there's no above-ground pond here. Stormwater would outlet towards the corner piece, the far corner of Briar Cliff Road. Again, this is for a three-story building with a total of 48 units in it. And that, again, is shown by the building outline there in kind of the yellow color. I will note, one thing that was kind of referenced earlier was the change from the original plan. The original plan, as was referenced, did have about a 20-foot-tall retaining wall that ran along the majority of the length on Briar Cliff Road, and as the applicant mentioned, that was a concern to the neighbors. They did go back to the drawing board, and what they've shown you today is, it's a three-story building, but it does get rid of that retaining wall in lieu of basically just a natural bank that comes down to the Briar Cliff Road area. So, I did want to point that out. These are the elevations that have been submitted with this request. That bottom elevation, that's the front elevation, that's the one you would see along Renolda. That top image, that left side elevation, will be the short side that you would see on Briar Cliff. And that second one down from the top, that rear elevation, is the large elevation you would see as you're coming north on Briar Cliff. That'd be the one you would see from the neighborhood. I'll make a couple of points in summary. As we start thinking about Legacy, this site's located along a growth corridor where we start to talk about increased densities. And the other thing with respect to Legacy is, there are recommendations within Legacy that talk about thinking about ways for seniors to age in place, and so this is moving along in that direction. The subject property is close to basic services like employment and transit, and it will have sidewalks available with it. I do want to point out, the area plan, as I mentioned to you earlier, does recommend office or low-intensity commercial. I just want to make that a clear point. We talked a little bit, you heard some of the speakers talk about trip generation on this. Each time we handle a rezoning case, we do a comparison of what the existing zoning could allow with respect to trip generation versus what the proposed request would generate. And so, for an RS9 site, if you were able to max that out and to get 14 units at about 10 trips, about 9.5 trips per unit, that puts it at about 134 trips, and that's per day. That's not at any particular time, but that's spread over the day. As we looked at the trip generation in the IT manual, which is the manual we use to come up with all these numbers for the proposed use, based on the number of units that were proposed here, we come out with 135 trips per day. So, when we start thinking about what could be generated under existing zoning versus what could be anticipated with this, it's essentially a wash in terms of estimated trip generation per day. I'll also note one other thing that we also put in all of our staff reports that council's aware of, and that is our capacity for the roads. So, Renolda Road has a capacity at level of service D of 38,000, and right now is at about 25,000, so there's still extra capacity left in Renolda Road. Some site-specific issues, you've heard many of these, the building height and scale, the location of parking and access points, stormwater and erosion control, and some of the landscaping and appearance issues along Briar Cliff Road. At the planning board level, the applicant, as you heard earlier, did volunteer conditions that deal with erosion control, stormwater, and screening of the dumpster. Those are the conditions he mentioned to you, and those are included in that special-use district permit that's part of your agenda packet. At the March 14th Planning Board meeting, there were two speakers in support, one of those was the applicant, two speakers in opposition, and just a summary of kind of the concerns that were mentioned, again, erosion control and stormwater, the increase in density over what the RS9 zoning currently allows, and then the building height and building size. After hearing that, the planning board voted eight to one to recommend approval of this request to council with the volunteered conditions that were included.
Questions, Mr. King? Mr. Clark?
I've got a number, and I don't know if you can answer them all, but I'll go quick. Is there a center turn lane on Renolda Road?
Yes.
There? Okay. The number of parking spaces, is that a computed number based on some formula?
.75 spaces per unit, and that's a standard we have in ordinance for elderly housing. It's different than the standard multifamily parking ratio.
Next one to the city attorney, is there a legal issue with age restrictions in apartments?
I think they're using the age restrictions that are found in the Fair Housing Acts. I don't think that's problematic.
Okay. Thank you. Next, the last question. Current construction was mentioned. Is there more than one project? Look, there was one going down Briar Cliff. What is that, and are there any others in the area that people are concerned about?
So, I can speak to this one. This is a subdivision, Briar Cliff Village that you see. This is the main driveway for it that's coming into the site. It's a single-family subdivision. I can't remember the exact number of units in that development, but I want to say it's somewhere in the low 20s, I believe, of single-family homes within that.
Are they still under construction?
Yes.
Okay. And last question, comment, it seems like to me, forget about this a minute, the neighborhood's got a water issue now. Is there anything that we can do as an elected body to work that problem? And you don't need to answer that, but it sounded like to me that's a different issue, but that needs to be addressed, if it can be. And I understand the concept, if it isn't a bowl. Water does run downhill, I have learned that. But maybe that's for a different meeting, but I do think we need to see what we can do there, if we can do anything. That's all.
Anyone have questions? Larson, a question?
Yes, just a quick question. On the water runoff issue, which seemed to have dominated the conversation at the planning board as well, have we done any hydraulics on this at all? Do we know, for example, the amount of runoff that is currently coming off of the housing sites? And the reference was made that the water was simply sheeting off of existing landscapes as compared to being controlled release. And then the second question sort of relates to that. After it leaves this site, where, is it piped? Is it in a stormwater drain system that takes it down to those ponds, or is it sheeting down the street?
Yep. So, I'll try to handle the first one. With respect to the Briar Cliff Landing Site, the subdivision that's under construction right there, that developer has to prove they meet the requirements of Chapter 75 of the city code, which is the stormwater ordinance. So, as part of that, they would have to go in and do the science and compute the amount of runoff that's coming off of that site under, based on what its undeveloped conditions were. And then when they manage the stormwater from that site, they've got to release it at or below that same threshold. So, they did that. I suspect what a lot of the concerns that you heard tonight were about was the fact that, keep in mind, that permanent stormwater feature is not installed yet because this site is still not stabilized. It's still got erosion control issues, and you've got erosion control devices that are out on that site right now. They're not stormwater, they're not permanent stormwater devices. What I believe one of the contributing factors is, is the fact that we've had such a rainy fall and winter from basically that first week in October all the way through February, and that's a challenge. It's a challenge for developers to get in there and maintain those erosion control measures to get the debris and the sediment out of those temporary sediment basins to keep them functioning like they need to be. I suspect that's probably a contributing factor to what some of the neighbors are seeing out there, is you've got an exposed site that's not stabilized and consistent rain events happening week after week after week. To your second question about what happens to the stormwater...
More specifically, on this site we're talking about tonight, not the construction site that's going on right now that obviously has problems and whatever. This site that we're talking about tonight, understanding the water conditions that are being generated that are going to change on this site, there's a condition right now of water running off the site. We've heard about that because there's no water control. We're going to have a controlled situation, it's going to be limited release. So, I want to know, are we comparing apples here or what? And then, and then the question is, once it is controlled, what happens to it? And you can answer that.
Yep. So, again, they'll be held to the same methodology, taking that pre-existing condition and making sure what they're doing post-construction has a runoff equivalent basically equal to that standard. What you heard from the developer and what they're doing is, instead of just managing to the city's standard of the 25-year storm, they're actually going to manage the 50-year event. And that's a condition that we've placed on zoning cases that have come to this board before when our stormwater staff has identified extenuating circumstances. That was something that was worked out at planning board, and the developers agreed to that. So, they'll be going above and beyond the city's minimum stormwater standard. I'll go back to the site plan, just as a point of reference. As I mentioned to you, that stormwater is handled underground, and you can see that device there to the west of the building. It outlets into basically this corner of the property on Briar Cliff Road, and basically that's going to come out somewhere in this area. So, if that water's going to come out over a two- to five-day period, probably get in this ditch line and come back down, probably that's that same point, probably come back down to Lock Drive where it looks like there's a, basically an underground pipe, a catch basin there, and then I suspect that water is going to go, can't verify that 100% because I haven't done the study, but I suspect that's where it starts heading south at that point.
So, it's going to be, it's going to be surfaced. There's no piping or anything to get it to those ponds. It's going to be running in a ditch?
Well, it's going to be in an exposed ditch, at least for that section of Briar Cliff that I showed you in the picture, and then it goes into a pipe from that section.
Oh, it does. Okay.
Yes.
I would share the concern of my colleague, Mr. Clark, Councilman Clark, that, you know, there's a water problem now, could be as a result of current constructions, and the disappointment that it's not working like everybody thought we could, and that the ponds are getting contaminated. You know, the concern is that this exacerbates it in some...
If we could hold our comments, we're getting questions at this point. Do you have questions, Mr. McIntosh?
Just a quick question on sort of the methodology of the outreach to the public on this. Can you just speak to that?
Sure. So, as you know, Councilman McIntosh, UDO requires that anytime you're doing a rezoning that's located within 500 feet of residentially zoned property, you have to do some form of outreach, and we leave that up to the developer to choose their form. I believe it was February 11th, the developer sent letters out to the neighbors for a meeting on February the 27th. That meeting took place. I believe that's probably some of where the initial concerns about the retaining wall and some of these other issues were made public. The developer, in an effort to try to allay some of those concerns, went back to the drawing board to try to come up with an alternative design. That was presented. A second neighborhood meeting, which was not required by the UDO, was, took place on March 11th, which was the Monday before planning board. Again, that was not a required meeting, but I believe that some of the concerns you probably heard at planning board about the timing of it, it felt a little close to the planning board meeting, but again, that was not a required effort. That was something the developer did above and beyond what our ordinance requires.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. King? Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. McIntosh?
What's our procedure here?
Let them give a motion, and if you'd like to comment on it.
I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W-3401.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion second. All right, Councilman McIntosh, you have the floor if you'd like to continue.
Yeah, this is obviously one of the most-loved pieces of dirt in Winston-Salem. We're back here for the fourth time looking at a rezoning effort. I was in attendance for the first planning board meeting on the bank that was going to go in there, and I spoke in opposition to that. Since I've been on council, I have voted in opposition and effectively killed the next two attempts to rezone this property. This one is different. The last, the first one, the self-storage building was, I think, by any measure monstrous. It was quite large and projected into the neighborhood to a degree that I think nobody was happy with except for the developer. The second, the previous senior housing development had similar issues. Very similar number of units, but the layout was different, and it pushed way back into the neighborhood, and so that as you're standing on Briar Cliff, you'd be looking up essentially 50 feet to the ridge of the building. That, to me, was unacceptable. I believe that that developer, had they had the time to do it, would have come up with a similar solution that the current developer is. This development is different to me because it is pulled up to Renolda Road. It is part of Renolda Road versus part of Town and Country. I think there's a significant difference there, and I think that once the, once the vegetation is put in and this thing sort of matures, it won't feel like it's in the neighborhood. It is a challenging piece of property because of the topography, and I would just like to ask a question here. Can anybody tell me the elevation change from Renolda Road to the parking lot, to the surface of the parking lot? If the engineer for the petitioner can just give me a quick ballpark estimate on that, I'd appreciate it.
Would you give your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Gene Muston. I'm with Borm Waden Associates, 621 Eugene Court, Greensboro, North Carolina. So, your elevation change will be a differential. You have some grade along Renolda, but it'll be a few feet. We're looking at, you know, four, five, six feet. Not 15.
Half a story.
At the most, yeah.
Okay. And the reason I ask that is that directly across the street from this project, there is, this proposed project, there is a three-story building that sits down in the parking lot. You come down off Renolda Road, you come down a slight incline, and from the street it looks like a two-story building. So, the massing of this from the street and from the backside, it's the best, it's the best effort that I've seen made to develop this project going, since I've been on council. Not very far down the road, we've got the Crystal Towers development that is a residential development, that's a three-story development. We've got an older apartment building across the street from that, that's a two-story building. It is unusual for that block, but it's not unusual for that stretch of Renolda Road. That stretch of Renolda Road carries enough traffic that I think it's, I think most people would agree, is no longer a single-family residential roadway. The effort that was made here to address all the items that came up at the first public meeting that I attended, I think, has been exemplary. I think everything that I asked specifically, which is exactly what everybody else has talked about tonight, I don't think anything new has been brought up since our first public meeting where the developer presented. Those same concerns that were addressed tonight were my same concerns, and I asked the developer to come back with specifics on parking, specifics on traffic, specifics on stormwater. I trust those numbers, and I trust the things that they have come up with. I think it's disingenuous to compare another problem that we're having in the neighborhood to this. It's a different animal. It's a, it's a different animal. They have different problems. What we're talking about here is what is the, how much water's going to leave this property after a project is done, is finished? That's the long-term issue that everybody's concerned about. The petitioner, I think, will, and staff, and we don't have our stormwater guy here tonight, I would ask Keith off this, but the amount of water that falls on this property is the same. It will be contained, and no more water will leave the property than was leaving it before. So, whatever water that is coming off that site now is the same amount of water that will leave in the future. It'll be held, and we're concerned about velocity and volume. The volume will not change, and the stormwater catch basin system is there to deal with the velocity. So, releasing it over a period of time into the ditch is something that should not, and this is not novel science here. This is not something that's been experimented with. This is something that is used over and over again. I trust our stormwater people who came up with the requirements that the proponent has asked for to have gotten it right. The problems that we're having on the other is due to the problem that they got caught in the middle of upgrading the site with some of the worst weather we've seen. We may see that again, but it's not like they're building 20-some houses. They're building a single building. They'll be in and out in a much quicker fashion than the single-family development that we're having problems with. I do want to talk about, so those are the physical things that I think that there are concerns with. I feel like those have been addressed. Who's going to live there is something I just frankly am not willing to talk about. Okay? We, as a council, have prioritized affordable housing in our latest priority session, and this is going to bring good housing to good people. It's on a bus line, it's within walking distance to a, to two grocery stores, to a Starbucks, to a doctor's office. It is ideal. The reason that the proponents are looking at this site is that it has all the requirements of being a great place to put housing for seniors. So, that, to me, is important that we push this forward. I do not think, as a Realtor, I am not convinced... I do not think, as a Realtor, I am not convinced that there will be any negative effect on real estate values. Town and Country over the last four or five years has done extremely well as far as housing values. I checked today, the average time on market for a house over the last five hundred days is twenty-nine days. People want to live in Town and Country. This is not going to be viewed as a detriment to buying property. And I just, I've been in real estate for a long time, I do not believe that this is going to affect property values negatively. So I'm in favor of this, I share the concerns, but I do feel like those concerns have been dealt with. I am comfortable, now it's up to us to, you know, to make sure that these things are being done, the things that the proponent says he's going to do. We need to ride her to make sure that they're going to happen. But I'm comfortable that the concerns that we've all have had have been addressed.
Any other comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, Councilmember Taylor, then Councilman Adams.
Thank you, Mayor members of the council. I just want to say to the developers, I think that this is actually a wonderful concept. Affordable housing is something that's very important in this community. And not only is affordable housing important, I think affordable housing for seniors are a little bit more important. And frankly, I'd love to partner with you to do a facility like this in my community. However, I just don't believe that it is right for this community because there were plenty of people who came up to this podium and told me simply that they did not want it. I believe that the job of government is simple, to speak for the people who live in the community. We've heard from the people who live in the community, so I will not be able to support this project.
Councilman Adams?
Thank you, Mayor members of the council. Councilwoman McIntosh is right. We've seen this project, this piece of land come through since I've been on the council, I think this is the third time. We do these growth management plans to try to make our city better as to where people live. And, you know, like many cities, it took us a while to figure out that everybody's not going to live in the country, and everybody's not going to live in the urban core. We got that. But we need density, and with density, you got to put it where people can get to their jobs vis-à-vis bus lines. People got to be able to go to the drugstore, the grocery store, the doctor's office, Starbucks, or a coffee shop. And Renolda Road, I've lived on that, that side of town for a long time, probably over forty, almost fifty years. We got to have healthy housing. We're in a crisis right now. And if we start to, and this is for everybody, this is not the people in Town and Country, this is for everybody. If we all start picking off that we don't want certain housing in our backyard or near where we live, then where do you think everybody's going to live? Where are the people going to live that can't afford to live where we all, some of us, live? There is land near our homes and neighborhoods that will help to create a more diverse and inclusive Winston-Salem. I live off Polo Road, Marlow Avenue. Behind my house was ten point five acres for twenty years, Councilwoman McIntosh. There are forty-four houses going up behind my house. I came home two years ago, the Caterpillar and all of the Kamatsu, they were out there digging up the yard. I thought it would be done in, you know, a year. It's gone through two developers now, much like this. But there are going to be forty-four houses with four people in each house. The egress is beside my house, it used to be a paper street, but it was really a street. The other egress is Polo Road, no different than Renolda, except it's just two lanes, one lane. You're talking about two hundred cars going out on the Polo, right at a stoplight, just like Renolda. But these are things that happen, people, in the times we live in. Will the sky fall and the sun don't shine tomorrow? Trust me, it will. When we closed down Forty, everybody thought, oh my God, Winston-Salem's going to get those tumbleweeds again. We are surviving it, and the project is moving along. I hear you, I felt the same way. My house with all this building, the water comes down. But the developer and working with them, they got all the little bells and whistles out there, Mayor, to stop all that water coming into our cul-de-sac, which is a hole, it's a bowl too. I will be supporting this project, Mayor, because I can't be an advocate for quality, healthy, affordable, income housing. And I voted, I supported the last project, and you voted against it. But I will be supporting this project because I believe that everybody in Winston-Salem deserves to live near features and communities that help make us all better. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Adams. Councilman Bessie?
Thank you. I think that the neighbors expressing concerns have raised reasonable questions. However, I think the reasonable answers are in the record. The staff's projections of trip per day from the site in its current zoning are a hundred and thirty-four trips a day. The staff projections of trips per day from the site as rezoned, a hundred and thirty-five, essentially no difference. The question has been raised regarding whether you would anticipate, you know, two cars or more per unit, that's a very reasonable question. In this case, however, there are forty-eight units, there are only fifty-six spaces provided. In my analysis, if nothing else, there will be self-selection of tenants by whether or not they anticipate needing to have two or three spaces available. If they need that, they're not going to, you know, rent here. It is, to my thinking, a residential property, which is significant, it does not constitute intrusion of commercial into a residential area. And from personal experience, I can tell you that yes, people at Fifty-Five do party, but the nature of my parties at Fifty-Five was a lot different than the nature of my parties at Twenty, so. I do tend, when it's a judgment call, as this, and the devil's in the details, and you need that district's representative to study the matter carefully and confer with their constituents. I tend to default to the judgment call of the representative from the district.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. Motion passes, seven in favor, one no, Councilmember Taylor voting no. Thank you very much, Councilman McIntosh, Councilmember Burrow.
I need to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
About the mud and the rain. I'm sure the city manager has a record of many neighborhoods that's experiencing the same thing. So if you're going to do one, make sure you're fair about all of them.
All right, thank you. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
We developed a poverty committee, what do you call it, a commission or a committee?
Pardon?
I say, what do you call it, a poverty what? That was developed not long ago.
Yeah, we have a plan that was presented by the Poverty Thought Force, is that what you're talking about?
Yes. Now, Mr. City Manager, how many of our tax dollars did we put in that project?
I'm recalling, Mayor Potem, I think it was about sixty thousand a year. Is that right, Mayor?
I thought it was forty.
Forty thousand a year?
Okay.
If it was forty dollars?
Forty thousand a year.
I said if it was forty dollars. It's our tax dollars, and many people are making sacrifices, and they are in poverty, but they're still trying to pay their taxes. I would like to know, even though we didn't, it's act like forty thousand, it's not that much money, it's an awful lot of money for the poor people, because we have two Winston-Salem's in this city. And I was very pleased when I heard the councilwoman talk about diversity where we live. Because in this city, we have the poverty, we have the hunger, we have the underpaid, we have the unemployed. So I would like to know, when do you expect, Mayor, since that's one of your initiatives, that we will be getting some kind of report?
Well, just starting, Councilmember, obviously you've got to give it a little time to show some results.
I asked you when.
I don't know. I probably will be giving annual reports clearly, but the rates are going in the right direction. We've dropped six points already in the last four years, so hopefully we can keep it going in the right direction. But the program has just got started, and we will certainly give the council, as well as the county, and the Chamber of Commerce, and the foundations, all who have joined together in supporting this. This is a community-wide effort in supporting this effort, and so we'll be giving reports back to all those agencies as well.
Well, I would expect that because we have an investment in it, and I think the citizens would like to know what's going on. We had several people come down to give their input about other subjects, and they emphasized that we are not doing the kind of job we ought to be doing in this city for the poor. We have various programs, but evidently, to be considered how we are considered as a city, we're not doing the best job. So I would expect, and I want you to understand, to me, as I said to the mayor, it appears to me that the person who heads that should have been a person who's more familiar with poverty. And I would hope that he would be very conscious of it, and to tell me that, well, we put a block in second. To me, it should have had a minority to lead this. That's my comment.
Mr. Clark?
There was a question asked in the last one that was not answered, and I don't believe there's any public money in this project, is that correct?
Not that I'm aware of. Not city money. The developer is looking for a low-income housing tax credit from the federal government.
Federal government, but no city money.
No city money.
Okay. We don't have the control over the other money, thank you.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to move.
Motion second to adjourn, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, we adjourn.